All right. I call this meeting to order. This stands for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. To roll call, I think everyone's here except for Lindsay, Dan, Nicole, also President Shannon, and of course Brooke. Um, do we have anybody? Any visitors? Number four. This is a motion to adopt that agenda presented. Do we have any changes?
The only changes, I have a few other things I wanted to touch base on about the funeral that we talked about. I just, I want to give you a little update on that and also the insurance. So if we can add that. F and G, I guess?
F and G.
Yep.
We have a motion to adopt that agenda as presented.
Some moved.
Motion by Brittany, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Number five, public comments and rebel recognition.
Rebel recognition will graduation, so congratulations to our graduates and thank you again, you two, for helping and being a part of that process or that celebration. Um, obviously that's a big deal. We have a lot going on with our spring sports. Track is running today, softball, high games today, baseball's playing right now in the first round of their sections, golf is next week. Um, a lot happening. So softball one, two today, baseball was behind three zero, but it was second inning. Track was doing very well. I think, Micah, you were just there. So, uh, and then we host the section track meet this Friday here at DGF. So that'll be good.
Yeah, for sure.
Graduates, Kinder Herner's graduated, our preschool's graduated.
Fifth grade, dear.
And dear graduation, thank you, dear graduation, fifth grade.
I think we had some records at track.
Tracker high jump, or not high jump, pole vault was broken for sure. And I think, um...
Kelly Solzhenitsyn.
Pole jump, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also in golf, uh, this golf, I think there was, um...
Yes.
I wish I could remember the names, but...
Lexi Beadle.
Yeah, Bedal, that's right.
Bedal, yeah.
Bedal. And she, I'm sorry, I didn't...
I think she, um...
Joel Walcott.
All kinds of, okay.
Congratulations to some of the schools.
Yeah, so a lot of, a lot happening right now, I guess.
And thanks to the teachers for a great year.
Yeah, thank you, internet.
Yep, staff, everyone.
All teachers, Perez and Cooks, yeah, all staff. Yeah.
All right. Let's go on to six point one. This is board committee reports and the facilities transportation report.
We did. So we met last time after the meeting and what Shannon kind of broke down for us was the plan, the future plan for the seventeen acres out this way. So there is going to be, there is a butterfly garden in Dilworth already in the front of the school. And then, um, glinted along the fence line of the football field, there is going to be a monarch, monarch garden.
And they did plant it, um, with the eighth graders last Thursday. And you'll see it, it's just a little stretch the first time, because then they're going to try, sorry, but they're going to, they're going to take the seeds and then they plant a little farther down, and then each year, and then they'll put the class of planted it. Um, and so it'll slowly grow. Yeah.
Yep. So then we have, um, and then there's a foundation that gave us a grant...
Yep.
...to pay for the garden. And then that kids will harvest the seeds like Shannon said, and then they'll reseed the garden. We have a new egg teacher that starts this fall, going to be planted this week, or make like a pumpkin, a pumpkin patch. So there's outdoor prairie classroom, which is about three acres, and then FFA will have four acres, and then we're also planning on planting some trees as above.
Yeah, that's our hope. I'm working with, um, be working with soil conservation this summer to see what they think is best. I'd like to have, it's not going to be a forest by any means, but it'd be nice to have trees out there too. Uh, one for a windbreak, two for educational purposes again. But the prairie classroom for sure, I brought the, um, the director of the foundation, he thinks it's going to be fantastic. And then the FFA, yeah, new teacher, they, Kayla and this new egg teacher have been talking a little bit about corn, about pumpkins, about seed plots. So, yeah, we'll see when she gets here this summer and start to see what we can plant for next fall. If you look out there, uh, there's alfalfa there now. I did talk to the farmer that's farming or that's doing the alfalfa. I said, uh, go ahead and keep doing it, but he said, yep, just tell me when I stop. And then when they want to take over and work it up, I'll just, he said, I'll make sure that I cut it. You know, when they cut alfalfa, it's really short. And so he said, I'll cut it really short right before you guys need to do something with it. So, and that's the, the guy from the foundation said too, that that should be good.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Need to add, or, Micah?
Let's move on to six point two, superintendent.
Yeah, I know this, you know, it's, it's like trying to get my whole admin team together this summer, getting all you guys together. I, I know, I mean, everybody's, we got kids, we got this, we got work, we got, I know it's difficult. Four, and I'll just, I'll just start by being selfish, and I can do whatever, because all adjust schedules. One of the things I told David is the thirteenth works, but I already have three exit evaluations of admin, a couple of directors and a principal that day, so I can move them, no question. And I know nineteenth is the nineteenth is the nineteenth. But that would be best for me, but we could do something else too. And I know as we looked at emails, it worked for sound, doesn't work, so I just, I just, I want to finalize it today, whatever we pick, I guess I'll work with you guys. So I don't know if you want to discuss this now or after, when we want to schedule that work session.
I think, I mean, I would, I guess I would choose the nineteenth. I think Amy, you're the only one that maybe has an issue with the nineteenth.
No, nineteenth works for me, I think.
Oh, it was Nicole, Nicole was going to be gone.
I knew there was one person, but we kind of have that with just about every date that's like one person. And I think that's just, happens to the date that maybe works the best for everybody, and I'll make that work.
Should we just do that and I'll send it again? Okay. And I'll send something tomorrow then, so, okay. I'll just plan that and then I'll email all kind of a schedule or a plan for that day. Uh, serious report, this is something I was talking to Brooke about, I said, you know, when I do a report in the summertime, it's good to have a focus, good for me, and then it'll all be good for the public to see too. And what I want to do, so the next board meeting, June something, yeah, eleventh, um, I'm going to just talk about enrollment, DGFS enrollment, state enrollment, the impact it has on our budget, so I'm just going to, so it'll be kind of an emphasis on enrollment, okay? Then I want to talk about our different funds, so Fund One, uh, Fund Two, Fund Four, and I'm going to work through those over the next couple more meetings, so I'll probably talk about Fund Two, um, which is food service. And I'll talk about Fund Four, which is community ed, and I'll talk about Fund One, which is general fund. And then how we can, because some funds are doing better, they have to be separate, they are restricted, but there are now some things we can do with it. So I want to kind of explain to the public how that whole budget thing works. And then obviously, we're going to need to have a final budget, or a preliminary, sorry, preliminary budget for you guys, uh, end of June, middle of July, somewhere in there. And so I just, and then the other one was staffing, and so when we do budgets, obviously staffing, whether it's certified, non-certified, that's eighty percent of our budget, so I want to talk about that too. So just kind of each, each time we have a board meeting, you're going to hear a little bit more in depth, so then as we have to make decisions down the road, potentially or not, um, our public can go back to these meetings, you guys can refer back to them to kind of have a, um, roadmap, maybe is the way to say it, of how things work in the superintendent's office. Okay? So I just want, it's always good to have a focus, it's good for me too. Um, graduation recap, uh, it was a successful day. I keep saying thank you when I do mean it, thanks to you two for being up there. Joe cut his short, his speech a little shorter, um, just because being a daddy, he thought it would go okay, and he left about this much out, and I just said, it's perfectly fine, but he had a lot to share and he didn't think he'd be able to share. So we were up there kind of going, Katie, get ready.
Yeah, I know, we're kind of looking at her, but...
Just going, ah!
Yeah.
Anyway, he just said, I'm not going to do, and that's fine, I mean, I get it too, that would be hard to get through, and it's okay.
How did the early elk go?
Early elk was, uh, overall was good, because then it just gave people time, uh, a gym was set, it's ready, wasn't a mad dash, people are in and out of the building, the buses worked, you know, halfway through the route, they're just finishing the routes. It was, it was better, uh, no question. The one thing was staffing, so, I mean, I thought the message was out, maybe it wasn't as clear as what I thought it was, and so we had to make sure, especially with some people that have kids, they thought they got it off. I said, uh, when you can, you have to take personal, it's like, it's a full day for staff, it's a half day for kids, and so...
Anyway, stuff to work on.
Yeah. Overall, as far as the day and setup and the building, it was nice to have that half day, so, thanks for asking. Administrative meeting, it says June sixth, it's actually going to be the fifth. They're going to meet with me on the fifth, Wednesday the fifth. We're going to have it similar, how we're going to do with you, I'm going to have them come to my house, and we're going to work during the day. We're going to start at ten in the morning at my place, and then I've got quite an agenda, and we're going to talk a lot about our strategic plan and taking stuff off that's been accomplished, so we'll have some celebration, and then we're going to have what's missing, what's next. We have some policy things I want to work through with them as far as gym usage and stuff, and we'll talk about that tonight in our policy meeting following this meeting. Um, and because I want to then take that information to our meeting with you guys on the nineteenth, so, um, kind of what we came up with there, because that's part of the agenda when I work with you guys is the strategic plan too, what's missing, here's what the admin is saying, what do you guys hear or see, what was the other information we had when we first set it up? So, anyway, that's that. Lake Agacy Cooperative Board Member, so we do need a board member to be a board member or serve on their board, so, um, he would like to have it sooner than later, because he'd like the, whoever the board member is, and I know we're missing two today, but whoever it is, um, to be at their July board meeting, because then we'll be official members. So if we don't have, they meet, I want to say quarterly?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think it was four meetings. I don't have the dates and that, so we don't have to decide today either, I just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, he was just hoping we could make that decision, or somebody would step up at least in June, so we can tell him, and then he can get contact information to make sure he's inviting that person to their meeting, okay? Funerals, so as we know, Emmer passed away, uh, their family, their church is small, and they had asked right away, you know, there's just a lot of people asking where could we have it? We had the benefit here, which was a huge success, so they asked, I asked you guys to, and they were very thankful that that was an option, so it'll be Monday, uh, so where am I? Monday, yeah, Monday the third, and it will be here from one to two. Uh, I think there's a visitation, it's, so around noonish, we'll be here. So Tracy's working with all of her camps and stuff, she's going to make some adjustments, some things to do with as much as she can around, so just want to let you guys know that, and thank you also. They were really appreciative, the family was, that we would allow that, so, which was nice. Uh, the last one I have is the insurance, so I do have the insurance proposal with me, it's not finalized, I think I shared this in your weekly update too, um, because he's going back to try to get them to sharpen their pencil a little bit, um, but I have the information and kind of what he's recommending, um, and which company we should go with, and, uh, so I can share some of the details on that later if you'd like, but, um, yeah, it's an increase, as we know, property, uh, insurance, vehicle insurance, this is kind of everything, right? The whole package, and so keeping our deductibles down with our, our vehicles is good, but I think we're going to end up raising our deductible, and that's what we're trying to negotiate right now, and that's, they come insurance, you're negotiating your deductibles, because they're just, insurance companies are having tough times with these big losses, right? You start thinking about us last summer, we had one point seven million dollars worth of roofing done, and you go, okay, what did we do? It's a lot, don't get me wrong, a fair amount of it was done, but it's just that expensive, right? And if you have roof damage in our deductibles, ten thousand, and they're putting one point whatever million, it takes a lot of ten thousands and a lot of premiums to get those dollars back. So this is what's happening to insurance companies, they're just taking a big hit, uh, and they're adjusting their premiums. So right now, uh, it's a little bit of a battle between Liberty Mutual, I just blanked it out, Western, um, oh shoot, I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses. That board's a London, oh shoot. Anyway, got it ready, there we go, Wright, Wright Specialties Insurance. They have, the company that we work with, with Marsh McLennan, they do a lot of work with them too, and he has them kind of beating each other up, trying to get the best rate. Those are the two, we have Liberty right now, and, uh, so we're working through the negotiations on that, and when we get that finalized, obviously, like, you know, but it looks like it's going to be a twenty percent increase.
What is their current deductible on the...
Dirty, current is ten, so we're looking at going to fifty.
Oh, yeah.
Because you think about it, if you're roof and you had major building damage, fifty, fifty's a lot, but fifty's nothing when you're getting a two million, a one million dollar fix, right? And the premium is, and that's what we're working on, is what's the difference then if we have a thirty thousand dollar, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand, and then there are fifty thousand?
We probably haven't...
If that happened, yeah, right, so if we can get some of that deductible adjustment there, it could be closer to a fifteen percent increase. Down fifteen percent. Still substantial, uh, so dollars and go, okay, what does that percent equal? Right now, if we were just going to take what they offer and kept it at ten thousand, it's going to be a little over a fifty thousand dollar increase annually in premiums. If, his guess is if we do some negotiating, it'll be about a thirty thousand dollar increase, so it's better, it's still, it's a substantial number, but he said, he, he just, not to make everybody depressed, but he said it's starting in the commercials, properties, insurance is going through the roof, and he said, I'm going to tell you, every homeowner across the Midwest is going to get spanked next. Insurance companies are just fixing too many roofs and too many front yards and whatever else, so, anyway. Sorry to finish with that depressing note, but, um...
We probably haven't raised our premium or our deductible for some time, I guess.
Uh, it hasn't, no. Uh, the other, the other thing that we're doing is our property value was obviously increased as well. We added a fair one of square footage, and so that was the other thing that was missing in the past, or a square footage, now we're getting it all accounted for, which, when you do that, right, it's going to be a higher rate, and so that's the other part, you know, you think about what if we add percentage wise to our building, well, you're going to have a percentage increase on insurance, so... Yeah. Questions from me?
All right, thanks, Shannon. Let's move on to seven point one, this is a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on the first of two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by E, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, if I have any questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to consent agenda at number eight. Uh, we have claims and accounts, bills for a million amount of...
Two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and forty-one cents.
Your treasurer, uh, treasurer's monthly budget reports in your pack. So we'll grab it. Consent agenda, approve the resignation, surely also paraprofessional effective the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Resignation of Noel Cole Crop, paraprofessional effective at the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And the resignation of Net Carpenter, paraprofessional effective the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And approve the resignation of Heidi Hunter, speech language pathologist, effective the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by E, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussions?
Just to let you know, Heidi, um, has done this because she, Lake Agacy Cooperative has hired her as a speech, so she's one that decided to go over there. She was going to be here, and then they talked to her and went back and forth, and she has decided to go over to Lake Agacy as their speech pathologist, obviously working with our kids, but she's going to be working for them, so she has a contract, she was approved by them, so then I said, when they, she gets approved there, she was going to resign. Heidi also, uh, one of the big things is she qualifies for our retirement package because she meets all that criteria, I said that was a part of the total package. Anyway, just want to make sure you guys understood that, because she was part of our staff for a long time and still will work with our kids. Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to number nine, nine point one, confidential contract, this is for, uh, to approve confidential contract for Marcus Hess, big business manager, effective July first, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion?
You guys know Marcus, been with us for three years, uh, under Brady Martin's, Brady Martin's let him go and let us hire him, this was a, we're excited because we get to have him full time now, and the cost was right around five grand, so... Well, yeah, well, just over that, wasn't much more, so very happy to have him, he's excited to be with us full time too, and I just really feel it's going to take us and move us forward sooner than later, right? That we've, yeah, anyway, very excited, and he's excited as well, so that's good.
I'm sure this staff will say that they have someone here full time.
Yes, it's kind of that full package, I know Brooke is kind of bummed out, but, okay, she's really happy too. Yeah, district office happy, so, yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. On to nine point two, this is to approve the confidential contract for Nikki Eck, special education slash payroll assistant, effective twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by E, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, this was the last kind of person with Lake Agacy, she was, you know, Marianne's secretary, so we're working on what can we do there, and so we sat down with her, um, her hours are going to be adjusted a little bit, uh, but she'll work in the district office a little bit, part for Lake Agacy, uh, part for the district office, Marcus has some things he wants to help Ann Becky with payroll. And so because she's working in payroll, that's where we had to make it a confidential, because she's going to be dealing with a lot of personal information there, and so that's why it's going to be a confidential contract. So she was happy that she gets to stay out and be a part of us still, and she was the last one we had to talk about, so, yeah, happy, and she will be, uh, in the district office, that reception area for us, that's where she's going to sit up, so she'll be back there by us. She's also going to help low in the elementary in the morning when it's crazy, uh, she'll relieve for lunch, uh, Jamie for lunch too, and then she'll also be back there at the end of day and the buses and all that fun stuff, so she will support the elementary office. Yeah, we think that's a good thing, so, and overall savings for the district, and we're going to kind of create that, so...
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to nine point three, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Ann Lenhart, Lenhart, custodian, class two, step one, effective May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Micah. Brittany, second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to nine point four, this is a motion to approve, uh, resolution to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership, we do this every year. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by E, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Micah. Motion to read the resolution. It's fairly... Yeah, but it's... Uh, anyway, is that the resolution?
Yeah.
I'll speed read for this. All right. Resolve that the governing board of the entity Dilworth-Felton High School, hook in the state of Minnesota, delegates, control supervision, regulation of interscholastic activities and athletics, referred to Minnesota Statute Section one eighty-eight, C one zero one, to Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certified to the State Commission of Education, as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further result, that school listed as authorized by this, governing board sets school district or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interscholastic activities and athletics sponsored by the state league and its various subdivision. Further result, that the governing board or entity hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, policy, rules, and regulations of state league and all amendments thereto, as the same as are here published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook and file at the office of the school district, or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standard of government participation in state league sponsored activities and athletics. Further, the administration responsibility for determining student eligibility and for supervision of such activities and athletics are assigned to the official representatives identified the governing board or entity. All right, that's it. Since it's a resolution, we'll just do a roll call. Brittany?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Micah?
Aye.
Motion carries, that's the resolution. All right, on to nine point five, this is to approve the first reading of the following policies, four seventeen, community use of youth, four twenty, student satisfaction points with sexually transmitted infections and diseases, and certain other community diseases and infection conditions. Four twenty-one, youth employees and school board members, four twenty-two, policies incorporated by reference, four twenty-three, employee-student relationships, four point five, staff development and mentoring, four twenty-seven, workload limit for certain special education teachers, four thirty, most retirement healthcare savings arrangement, four forty, employee use of social media. Uh, this is the first meeting, though. I believe. So do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by Brittany, do I have a second? Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion on the changes of the policy?
Yeah, we have policy meeting tonight, so we'll be discussing it.
We'll hear more about that.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. On to nine point six, uh, this is for the approval of the LTFM ten-year revenue and expenditure projection plan as presented. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by E, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. And just so you know, this is a resolution, so we'll read it, uh, but this is something we do every year. LTFM ten-year revenue, uh, plan is something we have all seen, uh, we can change this at any time, so it's sort of proprietary that we approve the resolution. So I'll just read the resolution. Whereas regularly scheduled meetings, the school board of independent school district twenty-one sixty-four was held at the DGFS community rep, ended at six P M, May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, whereas pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section one twenty-three B five ninety-five, all public schools are required to annually update their district long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan and submit the board approved plan to the Minnesota Department of Education. Being resolved by the school board of independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four Dilworth-Felton as follows, the board hereby approves the revised district's long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. The clerk is authorized and directed to submit a copy of the adopted resolution to the Minnesota Department of Education as soon as, as reasonably practicable after its adoption, but until we've been there then, July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. All right, do we have any questions or discussions? Do we have a motion or a second?
If anybody wants to see it, just so you know, I shared the sheet with David today, it's this long spreadsheet, uh, expenditures, and if you recall, um, nine million of that Uh, expenditures, and if you recall, um, nine million of that was bonded for this project. Um, so we, we're at around a hundred and seventeen thousand that we can use to do other things on an annual basis until, I don't know, I'm gonna say around twenty thirty, I'm gonna say, and then it drops down, and then we'll have some more funds, but, again, like David also said, um, it can be adjusted throughout here, depending on what ends up happening with HVAC, or roofs, or sidewalks, or windows, or doors, or whatever, but it's all laid out, so if you do wanna see it, please let me know, I'll show you.
Any other questions or, for Shannon? Okay, it's a resolution, so we'll do a roll call. Brittany?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
David, aye. Amy?
Aye.
Micah? Resolution passed. Okay, go on to nine point seven, this is to approve the certified contract for Connor Jensen, social studies BA, step one, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion?
This was, uh, when Sam was leaving us, you noticed that resignation a couple weeks ago, or, I'm sorry, board meeting ago, so very fortunate to get this person, and they were very happy with the interview, so we're excited. Yep.
Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Onto nine point eight, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Alex Manther, custodian, class two, step two, effective May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion?
Alex has been with us for a while as a student, uh, custodian, he's a rock star, he graduated, so now he's officially, he wants to stay on, and Chase is really happy, yeah, it is, and Chase has been super happy with him, so, yeah, this is.
He's a great kid.
Yeah, perfect fit for us somehow.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. Motion carries. Ten point one, uh, the next board meeting is Monday, June tenth, um, twenty-four at six P M here at the DGF community room. Um, ten point two, the budget committee meeting will follow the June tenth, um, board meeting. All right, so on to number eleven, this is for a motion to adjourn the meeting, do I have a motion? Motion by Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Got the most.